Good evening, and welcome candidates, you who are in the audience and those who are viewing us at home. This is the candidate forum for the special election for Johnson County Board of Supervisors. I’m Susan Enzel. I’m a member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County. I will be the moderator for this evening’s forum. The forum is being livestreamed on our Facebook page. It is also being filmed for rebroadcast on the three public education and government channels in Iowa City, Corleville, and North Liberty. Please check their websites for scheduling. Additional information about candidates may be found on the League’s vote411.org site. That’s V-O-T-E-4-1-1.org website. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any party or candidate, which is why we have the policy that campaign literature is welcome outside the room following the forum, and that there should be no politically-oriented buttons, signs, or literature in this room. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues, and it does act to influence decision-makers on these issues. We work not only to register voters, but also to provide them with the critical information on issues in order to help them participate in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age or older, and we have membership forms, of course, available outside in the lobby. I encourage you to join us as a League member. We can use your time, we can use your talents, and we can use your financial resources. League members advocate, and we inform voters. We believe that democracy works best when more people are involved. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to attend. The format for this evening is as follows. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them, starting with a question from the League. Then those will be followed by ones that have been submitted on the numerous cards that I’ve already received from the audience. League members are distributing more cards and pencils for you to write questions on. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish, but please put only one question on each card. Hold up the cards, and a League member will collect them throughout the forum, and then bring them to me to read. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates after the forum directly, or at another time. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Due to the timeframe, there will not be time for rebuttals. Near the end of the scheduled time for this event, each candidate will then have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will alternate throughout the evening. There is a member of the League in the front row who will be our timekeeper. She will use cards to alert the candidates when time is about up, and then when it is up. Tonight, we have two candidates running to fill the two years remaining on the term of Kurt Fries, who died in October. Phil Hemingway is the Republican candidate. Roy San Porter is the Democratic candidate. So I’d like to begin with opening statements, and encourage you to speak directly into the microphone. You may need to move it so that you are able to do that, so that you can be heard by the audience and also broadcast. Let’s begin with these two-minute opening statements, and I’d like to start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Thank you very much from the League and everyone coming here this evening. I would ask everyone to observe a moment of silence in respect for Kurt Fries. I knew Kurt, and his untimely pass, his untimely death unfortunately puts us in this situation where we’re having this special election. I was born and raised in rural Johnson County on a century farm on Strawbridge Road. I farmed for a living, not just growing up on a farm. I understand rural issues. And I spent five years in Belize and Central America managing Roy Carver’s cattle ranch. And in 2015, I was elected to the Iowa City Community School District as a Board of Directors. I will serve in that capacity when successfully elected to the Board of Supervisors, and that term will end in November of 19. I look to bring fiscal responsibility and rural representation to the Board, and I also wish to thank the League of Women Voters for identifying me as a viable candidate, as that view is not shared by everyone.
Mrs. Porter?
Hello. My name is Roy San Porter, and I’m running for the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. I would briefly like to tell you about me, say what I see the top priority issues in our community, and ask for your support on December 18, 2018. Much of the work that’s done by the Board of Supervisors overlaps the work that I’ve done in the community for almost three decades. I have been in Johnson County, I live in Johnson County, I am the wife of Anthony Porter, and I have two daughters, Antonia and Stacy, who graduated from Regina. I moved to Iowa in 1989, and I came to rural Iowa. Like I said, I was born and raised in Saginaw, Michigan, but I came to Washington County, where I came to work for IBP. So I’ve had people that say something about rural Iowa. I have lived in rural Iowa for three years, and I was proud to call my mom to let her know that I had cows in my backyard. That was something that I looked forward for. But one of the things that I wanted to say, that as a Johnson County resident, community leader, community advocate, community activist, and community volunteer, I understand the change we need in our neighborhoods. I have served on many executive boards, and during that time, I have found ways to improve the quality of life through partnerships, by breaking through barriers and by connecting our community. For a connected community is not a safe community, it’s a productive community that prospers beyond statistics and expectations. I’d like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me to this event, and looking forward to your questions.
Good. Thank you both. The first question is from the League of Women Voters. What previous experience do you have that will help you to navigate the political, social, economic, and infrastructure-based duties of this position in order to impact meaningful change or development? In two minutes. In one minute. It’s a big question, so we’ll start with you, Mrs. Porter.
Yes, ma’am. I am a woman with working-class roots, and I am a woman of color who has worked across racial lines with members of our community, white, black, Latino, et cetera, for decades to make our home a better and more equitable place to live and work and raise children. I worked in a meatpacking plant in rural Iowa when I first came to the state. I have worked as a social service professional in numerous ways, including as a juvenile court liaison, a star case manager for Shelter House, and as a community liaison for Four Oaks. I have worked for local government as a member of the Iowa City Department of Parks and Recreation. I currently work with Teamsters to help make sure working people have a voice and get a fair wage for a fair day’s work. So one of the viewpoints I bring in understanding on many levels the struggles working folks in Johnson County have, and how the services like those provided by the county make a big difference in the lives of our neighbors.
Thank you. Mr. Hemingway?
Yes. Well, I have a broad range of experiences. As I said, I worked in Belize and Central America for five years. I worked another five years between Africa and the former Soviet Union. I have a blue-collar trades background. I’ve worked with my hands my whole life, so when the discussion gets to labor, I know what it’s like to be on the working end of a shovel. I can, you know, my work on the school board, I think what I said as a candidate, I have done as an elected official. I believe I’m the only elected official in Johnson County that routinely audits the checks and receipts of that organization every two weeks. And I worked very hard to reduce chemical spraying in our buildings and on our school grounds, and was on a steering committee that brought Ag Education and FFA to our schools.
Okay, thank you both. I’m going to turn to a more specific question now. What is your position on rural residential development in light of the county’s 2018 comprehensive plan? And this time, we will start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Well, as a farmer who grew up on a century farm, preservation of our natural resources and Iowa and Johnson County’s greatest resource is our farmland. And I want us to be great stewards of that, not only for ourselves, but for future generations. My family’s roots in Johnson County go back to 1850s, when J.P. Calder bought the land on Strawbridge Road. So it’s very important to me that we preserve our productive farm, all of our productive farmland, and that we don’t squander the resources that we’ve been blessed with in our county.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, ma’am. Well, I’m going to state that I did get a chance to go out and look at some farm when people was like, “She don’t know much about rural areas.” Of course I don’t. Why would I? I’ve been in the city. And I got a chance to go out and talk to people about conservation and preservation, and I’m learning as I go. And so right now, I’m just going to state that the current Board has done a good job on preserving farming and protecting the environment, and I plan on keeping that up. I know that we have a lot to learn, I have a lot to learn in that area, but the current Supervisors have already offered to help me in that position. Preserving the lands, land preservation and conservation I see now is very important. And one of the things that, while going out to get the information that I did get, I’m a type of person that I’m always trying to find ways on how we can educate others. So I’m going to make sure as I get it, I’m going to educate my people in the community.
Okay, thank you. A follow-up question to rural development and the preservation or conservation of rural development is this one. Should the county support a moratorium on CAFOs, Confined Animal Feeding Operations? And this time, I believe you will start, Mrs. Porter.
Okay. I’m going to say, it was a travesty the way Iowa Republicans, who used to preach local control, took aim at county’s efforts to improve the lives of working folks and yanked away our ability to raise minimum wage. The same for the ways they have reduced our ability to have a say in what happens in our backyard. I’m going to oppose to the CAFOs. I did do my research, and I feel like Iowa has enough, and Johnson County has set a moratorium, and I’m going to stick with that and just wait for the state to regulate and do what they need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Hemingway?
Yeah. I will risk losing my street credibility and put myself in alignment with Kevin Kenny. And I agree with Kevin Kenny on this. I mean, the state is the governing body on that, and agriculture is important to our state, and I do not want one-acre livestock facilities on one-acre plots. But we have to recognize the importance of agriculture in our state and in our community, and the DNR’s oversight of this is necessary. And I agree with Kevin Kenny that it needs to be an even playing field. We can’t have 99 different rules and regulations to support these industries.
Okay, thank you both. Next question has to do with transportation in the county. How would you improve upon transportation in Johnson County? For example, late-evening service, service to rural communities, and a weekend service. And this time, we will start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Yeah. Well, I would be interested in looking at all those things. Of course, it’s what do we have money, what is, what are our funding for those things? And I’m very interested in making sure that existing roads and bridges are maintained in rural areas before embarking on new ones. I grew up on a road that was blacktop. Now it is gravel. And I am, I feel that certain rural areas have been overlooked for other projects, and I’m not opposed to looking at those things, but it all has to fit within the budget and all has to be economically feasible for the county.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, ma’am. I’ve said in many meetings about transportation, just trying to figure out ways of how we can get transportation just from Iowa City to North Liberty. As far as transportation is very much needed, especially when I think of the elderly services that have been taken away, when I think about Johnson County seats, that is no longer to get the people out at a later time or on a Sunday for people to get out that needs it. I feel like, yes, there is a need to create a county-wide transportation service. I am for more and better public transit, and I believe the county should participate in that. But the bottom line is Iowa City, Corleville, and the University have to fix the bus route. They are the ones who will have to take the lead.
Thank you. Mr. Hemingway?
I started that one. That’s okay. That’s all right.
I’ve got a little check sheet here. I’m still getting this stuff.
You’re good. I can do it again if you didn’t think it was good enough.
No, that’s fine. Thank you, thank you.
You better miss that. I thought it did fine.
There are a couple of questions I’m going to combine to here. This basically asks about what kind of budget experience you’ve had in your life, and what has been the largest budget you have worked with or administered. And this time, we will start with Mrs. Porter.
As far as the budget, working with, I actually served on the Housing Fellowship for 11 years. I don’t know what the total budget was, but that was my experience. I was able to get the experience of the budget. We did a budget every month for affordable housing here in Johnson County. And then now, it’s not a high budget, but we, I’m managing a company temp service that we’re paying our workers $15 an hour. So we’re able to give people a livable wage. So we hoping to spread that service out into the communities where we’re able to remove the middleman out of temp service work and pay the worker and not make a profit off of it. So that’s why I’m on budgets. As far as the Johnson County budget, I’ve studied it. I’ve looked at the comprehensive plan and the budgeting plan, and I know that the county wide levy is at its lowest, and that they run a budget between $100 and $120 million. So, yes, ma’am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hemingway?
Yes. Well, the Iowa City Community School District is the largest budget in Johnson County. And I, last night, had an hour-and-a-half work session, discussion, to discuss the challenges we’re facing with that one. So dealing with large budgets is something that, I have three years of elected official experience, and as I stated earlier, I go through the bills, I check the receipts. I don’t always, I am not a rubber stamp when it comes to consent agenda items, who anyone who has paid attention to Iowa City Public Schools will attest. And the reason I do that is, is because you don’t only pay attention to the budget in bad times, you pay attention to the budget in good times, because it will always rain and squandering resources inappropriately is a theft for other programs that can use No matter what board or entity you’re on, you should be a jealous watchdog of public funds.
Okay, thank you both. We’re going to change topics here a bit, and that would be to ask both of you, what social justice issues should the county Board of Supervisors be involved in? And this time, we would start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Well, there are many, but first of all, the county has to look within itself. There has been incidents in the paper about their treatment with their own employees that are concerning. And we have to make sure that the county treats not only the residents and the taxpayers with dignity and respect, but its own workers. And in my dealings on the school board, we had a similar incidence like this come before us. And it’s important, when these issues are brought to the attention of supervisors, that they respond and stand by their staff and correct the problems in their own house.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
As far as social justice, I’m going to say that the Johnson County Board of Supervisors should continue in what they’re already doing for social justice, and that’s minimum wage, making sure that the people of our community is making a minimum wage. They’ve gotten involved with affordable housing, transportation, restorative justice. There’s all types of things that they’re already doing, and so I’m just looking forward to continue the work that they’re already doing.
Thank you both. These two questions I’m putting together, one was, do you believe that Johnson County should be a sanctuary county? And the second one was, what should the county do regarding immigrants? Should we be cooperating with ICE or not? And this time, we start with Mrs. Porter.
As far as sanctuary city, absolutely.
It’d be a county.
In the county, that’s what I’m saying, in this county. In this county, I stood with the immigration, with the immigrants here. I was in a meeting, which was very tearing, to see that some of the people was being detained here by ICE in our community. And we sitting down with families that’s willing to turn their, sign their signatures over just in case they was going to be picked up through ICE, or scared that they was going to be picked up through ICE, turn the kids over to anybody that would take them. I truly believe Johnson County has stood up for that piece, and no, I don’t think that it should be, Johnson County is not a sanctuary city, but they’ve agreed that they will not get involved with detaining people as far as immigrants. So I’ll stay with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hemingway?
Well, I’m a big supporter of legal immigration. My family is a photo of successful legal immigration. My wife is a former Belizean resident. I have permanent Belizean resident status. We’re a country of laws, but you know, when it came, when this came before us in the school board, we recognized the importance that our students need to be safe in the buildings and that, but the rule, we will, we have to make sure that we abide by the rule of law.
Thank you both. I’m going to shift back to agriculture, and a question is, how would you help the small farmer who cannot afford to be able to purchase, say, more than 20 acres that is also then ag exempt? And this time, I believe we start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Well, with our unified development ordinance, we have to make sure and identify and recognize the growth of niche agriculture in our community and in our county. And it is expensive to get into farming, and we have to recognize that small livestock and vegetable and grain operations should be given the opportunity to succeed and flourish. And I will do everything I can to make sure that all sizes of agriculture are given an opportunity to succeed in the county.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
Absolutely. For me, anybody that’s wanting to purchase agriculture and don’t have the amount, my, I don’t know much about purchasing, purchasing land. If it’s 20 acres and they don’t have enough, I’m pretty sure that I will learn, to be able to learn more about this topic, because I don’t know much about. I did get a chance to talk to some people about a 40-acre rule, so if that applies to that piece and helping that person purchase land, then that’s what I’m willing to learn. I mean, if anybody interested in purchasing anything and don’t have enough of money, I would like to be able to help them and give them the resources that they need.
Okay, thank you both. This is a question, it’s both budget and also policy. The county is self-insured with regard to health insurance. Do you believe the county should pay for abortions and the day-after pill? And this time, we start with Mrs. Porter.
Wow. What a question. I believe that whatever the county insurance is, whatever that person chooses to do, if it’s covered under that insurance, I truly believe that it is up to that person to use their insurance for that purpose. I don’t know why, this is a tough question for me, because I don’t know. If somebody wants to have an abortion, it’s their choice. And if they help, they work up under the county and they have the insurance, I think it should be applied to. That’s just me.
Thank you. Mr. Hemingway, your thoughts?
Can you read it again for me, please? I’m sorry. That was crazy.
The county is self-insured. Do you believe the county should pay for abortions and the day-after pill?
Well, I think Roy San was pretty close on this one, but I don’t, yeah, it’s, if the, if, I personally, if the insurance covers it, and it’s a benefit of that insurance, I may personally object to it, but I don’t know that there’s, you know, that may be what it is. But I, you know, we’re, you know, Roe v. Wade is the, is a stated law. We’ve had, we’re not running for the Supreme Court here.
Okay. I think everybody’s time is up on what was an extremely difficult question to answer, but I appreciate your candor in answering it, both of you. Next question, again, is a fiscal type of question, and very specific. Do you pledge to vote against any raise in salary for supervisors for the rest of your term? And this time, we start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Oh, thank you. That one, I don’t have any difficulty with. That’s one of my stated positions as a candidate. I feel that the supervisors are more than amply compensated for their services. As Iowa City School Board members, I’ve discussed earlier, we oversee a budget twice the size of the county, and we do it for free. And it’s community service. I’m not looking for sympathy. I don’t get it from my wife. It’s all self-inflicted for anyone who runs for school board. But I think our county supervisors are more than amply compensated for the work that they do for the community. And I have a job right now, and this is, I look at being on the county Board of Supervisors as community service, and the compensation is more than adequate. And I have said that I would not seek or accept a raise in compensation during my term, and if, I will vote against it if it comes before me.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, ma’am. The role of a supervisor is to make sure the county is doing the best of its ability and all things that they doing, they need to be doing, from mental health services to county government services, like supporting the sheriff and the courts, the auditors, and things like this. Road maintenance, that’s a vital part of the job. So I feel like the compensation that they’re getting is, I truly support it, because they doing the work. But we all have to set the plans and priorities for the future, whether it’s future budgets or zoning to ensure sustainable and green growth in our county, so.
Okay, I think the question was a little more specific, and it was to ask you if you would make a pledge for your term not to raise the salaries of supervisors.
Oh, no, I'm not going to make a pledge like that. Absolutely not.
Thank you. Here's a question. How would you each classify your approach to fiscal responsibility? Progressive, moderate, or conservative? And this time, we start with you, Mrs. Porter.
For me, moderate.
Can you kind of explain why you chose that one?
Yeah, because you keep going back to this fiscal, things that I'm needing to learn and talk about. So, I would just consider myself moderate. We have a lot of people that said they're liberal and progressive, but we don't see it, so I'm going to stay with moderate.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hemingway.
Yeah. I will say I'm a fiscal conservative, because as I stated earlier, everything that you spend money on means there's something you do that you will not do. And in my role dealing with the budget with the school district, we run into all the time with times, even in good times, as I stated, as in bad times, where you have to be conscious of where the money is going, and are we getting the best benefit for the money that we're spending? And that is a policy that supervisors should hold themselves to in good times and in bad times.
Okay. Thank you both. One current Board of Supervisors member is raising questions about the lack of bidding for a current project. What is your position about this bidding controversy? And we will be beginning with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Well, again, as anyone who has watched school board meetings knows that I'm continually expecting competitive bidding on any projects or spending by the district, even if it is below a state requirement, just because it's good business practice. We can have preferred vendors, but that doesn't mean that you give them 100% of your business without having RFPs or RFQs to see if they're in line with where things are. And absolutely, that's part, that's the bedrock of transparent government, is competitive open bidding and sourcing the best, the best services for the taxpayers. It's their money.
Could you define what RFPs and RFQs are?
Yes, a request for price or a request for quote. They're terms that we use when you, when you go for a request for price. It's for the price on it, which has greater mechanisms to hold them to that. A request, an RFQ is a request for a quote, which doesn't have as much of the stringent requirements.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Yes, ma'am. Whether I agree with you or disagree, I am willing to meet and talk face-to-face. When it comes to bidding, I think that it shouldn't be the same people always getting to be, to do the bids. We see a lot of projects here locally that's done by the same people over and over, and a lot of times, I'm with labor and union. We would like to see people in those positions be able to bid for those positions as well.
Thank you both.
Yes.
Again, in a different vein, most of our rural, smaller communities are not ADA, Americans with Disability Act compliant, including our own Johnson County parks. What would you do to get the parks and communities into compliance with the Americans with Disability Act? And I believe I start with you, Mrs. Porter, first.
Okay. As far as that, one of my good friends is Phil Hemingway. I mean, I'm sorry, not Phil Hemingway. You are my good friend. I wanted to say Harry Olmstead. And I've been in many meetings that, that we just try to make things accessible, always, anytime we're having, making people feel comfortable and being able to get in and out of different places. So, I sit down and I talk with Harry a lot, and Harry's talking about these different types of things in meetings, about ADA compliance and making sure that the sidewalks, not just parks, but being able to go into many buildings and be accessible for those people to get around.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hemingway, your thoughts?
Well, first, I'm crushed that I'm.
Sorry, Phil. You is my good friend.
I understand. Harry is my friend, too. And, and that's the thing, in Johnson County, you have friends on both sides, right? So, the Americans with Disabilities Act is not a good idea. It's the law. And it's been the law for decades. And I'm, we've had to wrestle with this in the schools as well. We have done a terrible job of keeping up with accessibility. And it's, it's the law, it's on the books, we have to do it, it costs money, and we just have to follow the law. And Harry is a, is a fine example of a community member that holds elected officials to the fire. And, you know, he's not asking for anything that isn't specified by the law. We have to follow the law.
Okay. Thank you both. As the changing demographics in Johnson County approximate the diversity of much of the rest of the country, please tell us your thoughts on this and how you would plan to propose and implement policies in this area. And I believe we start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Well, I, you know, diversity is, is, is our community. Diversity is my family. We need, we, we need to make sure that we welcome and value and appreciate every resident in our community and that they're felt, that they feel welcome and respected and valued. But we also have to respect diversity of opinion, and that's healthy. And it's important, too, that our, our elected boards and our committees have a diversity of opinion and a diversity of thought.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Yes, ma'am. As a black woman, I see our community through a different set of experiences than anyone who has ever been on the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. Some of the experiences are good and hopeful, and some are not. We are lucky to have people on the board who take issues of equity and equality seriously, and that's something that I've do. It's something that I've been working on in my community, not just Iowa City, Corleville, North Liberty, but all over, no matter who you are. I have been an advocate for diversity in our community and educating and building relationships and partnerships and collaborations and trying to get people to understand diversity is what I am.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask a follow-up question or questions that are somewhat related to this. And one of the questioners says, we have heard different groups talk about being, quote, "unrepresented" by the board. What does it mean to be unrepresented? How will you represent all the people of Johnson County? And similarly, how will you use your life and work experiences to represent all residents of Johnson County? And this time, I believe we start with you, Mrs. Porter.
Absolutely. Nothing new to me, it's what I've been doing all the time, representing all. Embracing diversity and inclusion in Iowa City has been very important to me. It's something, it's my baby, because I feel like everybody, I'm totally against discrimination, and I fight and advocate on behalf. And so, one of the things as a Johnson County Board of Supervisors is seeing from my perspective, we have, Johnson County is growing, and we have people moving in that look like me and the rest of the people. People come here, they migrate here, come here to better theirselves. So, one of the things I've been able to do was be able to be there for the new people that's moving into this city. And so, now it's time to have representation of the people that's here, not the people that's just here, but the people that's continually moving here.
Thank you. Mr. Hemingway.
In all my travels and going around and talking with people when I've been running, seeking this, this office, I've gotten a consistent message from people in rural and, and small communities, is that they feel unheard, unappreciated, and unrespected. And Johnson County is bigger than Iowa City, Corleville, and North Liberty.
Yes, it is.
And we have diversity in our rural areas, and, and we have people that feel that the supervisors don't, aren't concerned with their problems, with their issues. And I have lived and worked in rural Johnson County, and I would, I feel that I, with my life experiences in that, can represent that community that has been unrepresented.
Thank you. New question, right? Okay. Okay. This is very similar, and I think you both have answered this, but I'm going to put it out. Are you running to represent Iowa City or Johnson County or both? And we would start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Well, I think I just stated that Johnson County is bigger than Iowa City, Corleville, or North Liberty. But we are all in Johnson County. I look to represent the entire county, no matter what political stripe or whatever classification a person wants to go by. And on the Iowa City School Board, we have to work with Iowa City, Corleville, North Liberty, University Heights, and Hills. And in that, in that capacity, you have to recognize the, the needs of everyone in those areas. And so, I, as I do have experience with that as an elected official.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Yes. I plan to represent everyone in Johnson County. Farmers should feel free to contact me with their concerns as well. Same goes for people in small towns or bigger cities, it don't matter. When I say I plan to represent all, it will be Johnson County.
Thank you. I would like to clarify something for the audience. Johnson County elects all supervisors at large. We do not have wards or districts. Some counties do, but we do not. Okay. Next question. How do you differ from members of your own political party? And this time, we start with you, Mrs. Porter.
Could you say that again?
How do you differ from members of your own political party?
How do I differ?
Yeah.
Probably, my political party is Democratic. And so, I don't know how I differ. We believe in the same morals and values, but maybe I differ because I'm a person that get out there and fight, and I do the work. As far as campaigns, I just went all over the state of Iowa, knocking on doors, campaigning for other people so that we can make, change the demographics in Democrats and Republicans. But as far as me being different than other Democrats, I'm a hard worker, I'm a, I have a love and passion for all people, it don't matter. I can get along with anybody, I just, I don't understand the question, to be honest. As a Democrat, I'm a Democrat, but I love all people, no matter what, so, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. It's a very open-ended question.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Hemingway, your turn.
Well, I don't want people to think that Republicans don't love everybody either that way. As, as far as, I'm not going to apologize for being a Republican. Republicans are the party of Lincoln, we're the party of Bob Ray, we're the party of Jim Leach. And do I agree with everything that my local and national party members agree spout? No. But as far as a Republican, I was endorsed by union labor when I ran for the school board. I don't know how many Republicans in the state of Iowa have, have got that. It was for a nonpartisan position, but as I was told by a Democratic official at a time when I spoke at their central committee, the schools may be nonpartisan, but we are, so. But I, I hope people don't look at party, I hope people look at the person and choose the candidate accordingly.
Thank you both. Question here is about time available and how you would utilize it. Serving in an elected position, specifically the supervisor position, is incredibly time-consuming. What makes you certain that you can handle this commitment should you be elected? And how many hours per week are you willing to dedicate to the supervisor's position? And this time, we start with you, Mrs. Porter. I'm sorry, we start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Supervisor position is a full-time job. It's given full-time compensation. It will get my full-time attention. I still will serve in the capacity as a school board member. All school board members have jobs. So, their school board work is a voluntary, part-time position, although anyone who has served as a school board member can attest that it's a, and I see a former school board member smiling in the audience, he knows the time commitment involved with that activity, and it is far from part-time. I feel that people should judge me on my commitment to my voluntary community, elected office, and judge me on the time and dedication I've given to that position. But I would, I would take this as a full-time position, and it would get full-time attention.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Yes. As a Johnson County Board of Supervisors, I will be fully, 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 give all my time to it. I'm not, even though, yes, it's a, it's a full-time job, but I can't see myself committing to something else when things come up. And at the same time, I might need to be in two places at the same time, and I cannot. I don't even know if it's legal to serve on two elected officials, you know? Nobody's never said, and maybe nobody's ever done it, but I will be totally committed to just the one position, working full-time with the other boards of supervisors. So, I, that's it, just saying that I'm, I will be totally committed to just the one position. For me, it's ethical, because I want to be true to what I'm doing, if this is the, what I'm going to be going into. I literally recused myself from the Iowa City Police Review Board this July because I was not able to fulfill the position, because I was missing meetings because of my other job that I was going out to. So, I was able to recuse myself because I wasn't fully committed. And with this job, I will be fully committed.
Okay. Thank you both. Changing topics again. Support for local foods and farmers was included prominently in the recently adopted Johnson County Comprehensive Plan. With support from the Board of Supervisors, plan for a food hub in Johnson County is now underway, as well as other projects. As a supervisor, how will you continue to support the work already underway to create a stronger community food system in Johnson County? And this time, I believe we begin with you, Mrs. Porter.
Absolutely. Field to family. Field to family was Kurt's baby. Kurt was very passionate about working together to create a local, healthy, and sustainable food system in Iowa City and Cedar Rapids with the Food Shed, and then we have the Farm to School farm stands. And this is something that, that is necessary, and it was something that I will continue to carry the torch, that Kurt was very, very, very sentimental about. Thank you.
And, Mr. Hemingway, your thoughts?
Yes, I fully support locally grown food, and, and anyone who lives in our community knows that our hub of activity any Saturday or Wednesday is the farmer's market right across the street. That is one of the big reasons why I work so hard to help us get ag education in our schools. I think it's important for people to, not only from a production standpoint, but from a consumer, consumption standpoint, to understand their food and where it comes from and, and how it's grown, and fully support local agricultural operations. As I stated earlier, it's important that we put in the framework to support those niche operations and, and help them to be successful, because we want to keep it local, we want to keep it close, and we want to be connected to the people who grow it.
Thank you both. Kurt Fries is mentioned again, and I am grateful to him for teaching me how to make a sweet potato pie. And if you're interested in it, go online, and it's a great training session. And I would say now I make probably one of the best in the area. Thank you, Kurt. Kurt was not only interested in local foods, but he was also interested in preservation and sustainability of the environment, as are many of our other current and past supervisors. I think specifically, what are your thoughts? I think specifically, what are your thoughts about continuing the tradition of trying to preserve land and the environment and sustainability, if you're on the Board of Supervisors? And we'll start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Yes. Yeah, Kurt was passionate about the land, and shortly after I announced the first time, Kurt and Mike Carberry came out to my shop, and we discussed things with the poor farm and, and opportunities there to, for ag education and, and those types of opportunities, since it's so close to West High and things along those lines. The CSR of concrete is zero. We have to-
What is CSR?
A corncertibility rating. And we have to make sure that this natural resource that God has blessed us with, that we cherish it and are good stewards for ourselves and future generations. And that's why we have to be very, very selective on where our developments go, where it goes, because once you take that land out of production, it's, it's very difficult to put it back into it.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Yes, ma'am. I was able to get some schooling before this forum on preservation and conservation. I was able to go out and talk, and I learned about Iowa before the European-American settlement and changes to the land and planning for the future. And so, what can be done as far as preserving is, how might we recover Iowa's life-supporting functions? Is, we can replace certain lost ecosystems with modern technology and with beneficial, beneficial non-native plants and animals. I was able to sit down and talk to someone who explained all this to me, very passionate about living out off a sugar-bottom road, and being passionate about nature and the species and, and preserving the things out there and not wanting anyone to build out there. So, it's, it's a lot that I've got to learn, because I just, I just started. I did get it started. But it's a lot to learn, and I'm willing to learn and sit down with anyone who's willing to talk to me. But the Board of Supervisors and many people in the community have reached out to help me with that piece.
Okay. Thank you both. Next question. I think it'll be yours, Mr. Hemingway's, right?
Yeah.
No, it'll be, it'll be Mrs. Porter. It'll be Mrs. Porter.
Yeah.
I think both of you have touched on this, but it's more specific. Will you and what would you do to support undocumented residents of Johnson County?
What will we do to support them? If they got a ID, we're going to support them. We're going to help them find jobs. We're going to find housing. We're going to find ways to make sure that they're getting the resources like everybody else.
Mr. Hemingway.
I will be a welcoming and inviting environment for all the residents of Johnson County.
Okay. Thank you. Next question. What two issues do you consider to be the most important for the Board of Supervisors to address next year? And this time, we will start with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Mental health is, is a huge issue. It goes across all, all lines, all income barriers that way. We have to provide greater space, greater resources, and treatment for all our residents, and it's adult and youth. It's very important. Also, as I stated, a big issue is rural representation, whole-county representation. I think that's important in how the county, as I discussed earlier, how the county treats all of its employees and all of its residents.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Yes, ma'am. We are facing a looming threat from Republicans in Des Moines who are likely to take away what is called the backfield. That's money that the state promised the cities and counties to make up for commercial property tax cut, tax cut the state gave away a few years ago. We need a board that will continue to prioritize and protect the vital services of our county, which our county provides, from mental health services to public facilities to roads. For example, I will be someone who will support the Access Center project. This is a partnership between the county and cities to have an alternative to jails for people in some kind of crisis, like needing detox services. Right now, we are clogging up the jails and the courts with people and expenses that could be handled more humanely and with less cost in other ways. The other things we need the county to be a part of is helping with affordable housing and continuing to be an advocate for fair and livable wages.
Okay. Thank you. Boy, we have a lot of questions tonight, folks. Yeah. And here's another one. What do you see as the county board's most intractable problem, and how would you address it? And this time, we will start with you, Mrs. Porter.
That would be poverty. Mental health, which I just spoke on, I just said, and mental health is one of the problems in our county. And with the Access Center coming in, even though that is being built, the state needs to give more money to make sure that all the accessibilities and the needs of the people are available.
Thank you. Mr. Hemingway?
Providing the services and infrastructure for all county residents on a limited and, on a limited budget, and the challenges that that will continually face on an annual basis.
Thank you. This is a long question, and I'm, I'll just read it. As a supervisor, what will you do to protect and support county employees? How would you handle situations where one employee assaults another? Would you support using public dollars in a legal battle that defends the accused, who would be an employee? Johnson County is currently being sued by at least one former county employee. And again, in the age of #MeToo, will you support public tax dollars fighting on the accuser's side or the victim's side? And this time, we will start first with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Yeah. First off, I, I will, I would not want to use county funds to defend the perpetrator. If, if this is something that rises to the level that the police are in an investigation, and that it, this is, this is what I have alluded to, it's an incident that has been in the paper. A similar incident like that was before the school board. We had a candidate, we had a candidate, an employee who was wrongfully accused of insubordination. And then, you know, it, it came before the board, and the board had our legal representation that said, yes, we back administration. This person was insubordinate. And all the person did was do their job. And they informed the public of a, I can finish, thank you very much. Informed the public of a ugly secret of the district that needed to be exposed. I voted to reinstate that employee with back compensation and everything along those lines, and that meant that I went against the legal, the legal representation of the board as in their recommendation. Sometimes board members have to stand up for, or people have to stand up for their staff and community members, and sometimes it means going against the advice of that entity's own legal representation.
Mrs. Porter, please.
Could you read that question again? Because that was just the end part, not the-
End part, okay. In the age of the #MeToo generation, will you support public tax dollars to, in support of an accused employee versus a victim? The employee has been accused of sexual assault.
Okay.
Or assault.
One of the things I would do first is listen to see what's going on. We need to know what's going on. I know what you're talking about. I know, I know the situation. I don't want to be judgmental. I think it'd take its course, as, as it will. But just being transparent, there are few exceptions, like internal personal matters and some legal matters, for example, that with the board being sued, I, I just can't, I can't take a side. I would just want to sit back. I don't support the taxpayers having to pay for this, but we would just have to wait it out, and I'm pretty sure it will get cleared up in court. So I just don't want to answer and, and be on one side and, and seem like I'm one-sided and not the other.
Okay. Thank you both. Going to go back to another question concerning some of our undocumented residents, and get your thoughts on this. Should our Johnson County Sheriff cooperate with ICE to hold undocumented people in jail? And I believe that is what the federal government ideally would like local governments to do. So should our county sheriff do that or not? And your thoughts on that?
No, they shouldn't, and they have agreed that they're not going to, and I think it should stay like that.
Mr. Hemingway?
As I previously said, we're, we're a nation of laws. There, there can easily be instances where local, local law enforcement is asked to cooperate with ICE with an individual that may be one that we want to have off the streets. I will not say that I will not encourage our law enforcement to follow the law and obey the laws and to help federal, federal law enforcement.
This comes back to a topic you've both touched on, but if you're elected to serve full-time as a supervisor, will you be giving up a job or other vocational activities to be able to have the time to devote to being a supervisor?
Yeah. And Royce Ann alluded to this a little bit, and thinking that it's, I can't hold both positions, both elected offices. There's an example in Scott County. I believe his name is John Maxwell. He's on the North Scott School Board and also a Scott County Supervisor. When I was interviewed by the same correspondent that interviewed us both for KWWL, she brought up an example in the Waterloo area. I, I can't give the name. Also, Paul Pate's website, Secretary of State, has an example of where a county supervisor and a school board member poses no conflict of interest, and that those offices can be held. I take very seriously the, the public trust that was given to me by the community to be a Iowa City School Board member. I will fulfill that commitment. And as I previously stated, I will, I will treat the supervisor position as my full-time job and my work on the school board as my volunteer work, as well as every school board member does that has a full-time job and serves as a board member.
Mrs. Porter.
Yes. I will be leaving a full-time job as a Teamsters Union Organizer, and I will be 100% committed to being a Johnson County Supervisor for as long as I'm a Supervisor.
We've touched on a lot of issues tonight: transportation, rural development, conservation, immigrants, diversity, budget. Covered a lot of territory, and I'd like to ask each of you, what is an issue we haven't talked about tonight that we really ought to be talking about? And I will start with you first, Mrs. Porter.
You talked about everything. An issue that you haven't talked about?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I don't know what to say. I'll just state that you've talked about, we haven't talked about districts. And I had someone ask me about districts in this, in the community. And I feel like Johnson County has 150,000 people in this, in this city, and the majority of the people live in the city, so I don't want to see it go to districts. But I did talk to that person and tell them that we could sit and talk more about districts. I mean, it's all about starting a dialogue and starting the conversations. But districts is something that we had not touched, and I was asked about it, so.
And I think you're referring to the state for the relation that would require counties of a certain size to be carved up into districts for each supervisor, as opposed to at-large, as Johnson County has.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hemingway, what would be a neglected issue?
Yeah, well, I, I agree with Royce Ann. We covered a lot of areas. Undoubtedly, there, there are many that we could go into greater detail. We could spend a forum just talking about the, the mental health needs of the county. We could talk about, like I say, when I'm talking with many of the people in the community, one of the big things coming back, and, and one that I think that is very important, is how many county residents feel unheard, unvalued, and unrepresented. And I think that that's a, that's a concern, and that's a concern when you have one-party rule for 60 years. And I think in history, there are very few examples of where that provides the, the best service and the best response to its community.
I'm going to ask one final question, and then we'll move to closing statements. Why do you want to run for this job, and what do you most look forward to if you become a supervisor? Now, let's see, there, those are the smiles I want to see. So what do you think would be the good part about being a supervisor, that you might enjoy doing? And I think we start this time with you, Mr. Hemingway.
Right. I would enjoy very much to look the eyes of rural residents that have not been represented, and they would know that they have a kindred spirit. And I think it's important that taxpayers feel that. I think it's important that people in our small rural communities feel that. And I think it's important, I share the, the interest to have diversity on the, on the Board of Supervisors. And, and I think that diversity of thought is very important, and I think diversity of opinion. And I think when you have a group that all, that, that share the same views, I think it's important as adults to have rigorous discussions on differing viewpoints, and I think that makes the best decision-making.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Yes, ma'am. I am running for the vacancy for many reasons, but there are three which are probably the most important. The first is that I love my community, and I love making my community a better place. That's work I've been doing for decades already. I want to take the work to another, another level by becoming a member of the Board of Supervisors. The second reason is that I believe in Johnson County, and I believe my experiences from working with people who are homeless, to working with youth, to working with local government agencies. I will make a great public servant for the entire county. The third reason that I want to support fairness, inclusion, and our county's progressive values as a member of Johnson County Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Thank you both. I think that segues nicely into your closing statements. And you'll have two minutes to make a closing statement. And this time, we will start with you, Mrs. Porter.
Yes, ma'am. Johnson County is an amazing county with so much potential. And while we've made many strides, much remains to be achieved. It's time for certain barriers to be broken that will open the door to radical change in our county. I'm committed to building a safe and healthy community for our residents to not just survive, but thrive. As a Johnson County resident, community leader, community advocate, community activist, and community volunteer, I understand the change we need in our neighborhoods. I have served on many executive boards, and during that time, I found ways to improve our quality of life through partnerships by breaking through barriers and by connecting our community. For a connected community, again, is not a safe community. It's a productive, a productive community that processes beyond statistics and expectations. Yes, we should preserve our historic past, but it's just as important for us- Yes, we should preserve our historic paths, but it's just as important for us to actively pursue new ideas to ensure a brighter future for all of us. I'm running for the Johnson County Board of Supervisors to bring creative, innovative, pragmatic, and collaborative solutions we need that will help make our county an even greater place to work, play, live, and prosper. I humbly ask you to vote for Roy Sand Porter as of tomorrow and all the way up to December 18th, 2018.
Thank you. Mr. Hemingway?
Yes, I want to thank the Legal Women Voters and everyone in the audience that shared this evening with us and brought all these questions and concerns to us. I hope you found our answers to be appropriate. I will just, in closing, share words. These are not myself bragging about myself. This is the Gazette Editorial Board in their piece that they wrote for my run in the November campaign. "Time has shown him," meaning me, Phil Hemingway, "to be an exceptionally valuable member of the body who consistently forces discussions that lead to increased academic opportunities for local students and healthier alternatives for all who use school grounds and facilities. There simply is no other member of the school board with his tenacity, attention to detail, especially on fiscal matters." In my first forum, there was a board member that said, "Don't believe everything you read in the paper." I don't believe everything. I didn't believe their endorsement of that candidate, but I do appreciate what the Gazette Board said about me. I am a lifelong resident of Johnson County. I've lived and worked here all my life with my hands in either agriculture or the skilled trades. I believe I bring a new perspective and new ideas to the Johnson County Board of Supervisors and would encourage you to consider me for your vote, honor before December 18th. And I again appreciate everyone's patience and attendance tonight.
Thank you both. Again, you've both answered a barrage of questions. Appreciate that. Appreciate the respect you showed for one another and for the audience. And I'd also like to thank the audience for being here tonight, for all the questions that you submitted, for those who are watching at home, the city of Iowa City, and the staff of our local television station for making this video possible and live streaming as well. Once again, I want to reiterate that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and that sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of either candidate. Remember to vote in this special election. Early voting has already started. That means you can request an absentee ballot, or better yet, you can just go down to the auditor's office and vote now. Or you can go to your regular polling place on December 18th and vote. But vote, please. Good night, and thank you again for coming.